But everyone, please silence your cell phones. Let me know when you're ready. Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
What's that? Okay.
Okay.
Oh, got it on. Okay, let's do a double check. Just give us one second, technical.
I got a thumbs up.
You got a thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a thumbs up. I make a motion to open the meeting.
My second.
Full call, please.
Uh, member, trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Leica?
Aye.
Trustee Mancher?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passed, please.
Okay, is there any board member with a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda before us?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not. With that being said, would the deputy clerk please read the open meeting compliance certification?
The public will have opportunities to comment on specific items when they occur in the meeting. You must step in front of the room if you're physically able to. An attendee is participating via web conference such as Zoom, please use the Q and A, raise your hand, and the clerk will announce attendees. Speakers should give their name, address, and organization. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste.
Okay. First of all, this is a workshop, so it's a little less formal. I know you're all here because you're interested in the work that the board is currently doing here on this piece of legislation. We have a draft of the law. All the board members, you all received that from our attorney? Yep? Okay. So why don't we kick it off? Is there anybody who wants to kick it off with any comments or any additional input? From the board, from the board first, yeah. And then we'll get, we know people want to have some input. Yep.
I'm losing track of which ones we are working from, but I will note the, in red, the, from the draft that our attorney has sent us. So I will agree to the addition of the word "or beneficial" under owner in definitions, as well as the definition for unhosted, the absence of onsite residential presence of the owner of the subject residential dwelling during the duration of the mental period. So that is on page, I think that's on page two. Then that, I would also agree to the in-red on page three, under MUEC, allowing unlimited special permits to allow STRs only if more than 100 feet from a residence. I'm in agreement with adding that piece of language also to the legislation.
And just so, we're using acronyms, MUEC, you know, we're just going, what the heck is that? It means mixed-use Erie Canal. It's on our, oh, we don't, yeah, we have a little zoning map here. We should have had zoning maps maybe. All right.
It's in our agenda, right?
It's on the website. All the zoning maps are right on the Village website, you can even Google it.
Yeah.
Okay, mixed-use Erie Canal. So just so people understand what we're saying in terms of the acronyms here. Okay, yeah, Lily, sorry to interrupt you, but I just.
That's all right. The rest is more complicated language regarding hardship. And I think the board was waiting to discuss that concept of whether to, and what the process would be for hardship, for, whether the PCBA would hear the application, whether the Village Board would hear the application, and what the process would entail. And I think that's a more complicated conversation that we were going to wait for board member, Marsha, to be present.
Just to have a full board, you know. I do want to say this is a significant piece of legislation. It's a problem that has a lot of facets, not a problem, I shouldn't say that. It's, you know, a concern, I think, with some residents and some Airbnb owners of how do we move forward, what does this look like for the future of our village? So, I mean, we welcome input from everybody. And just as residents are stakeholders, if you're a property owner and you have, have been running your business here too, you're a stakeholder as well. And I just want to say that personally, on my part. You know, we need to listen to everybody and factor that in, so.
Mayor, I have something.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so looking at the hardship. So Jeff, my question to you is, we already have a hardship in place for HPP, correct?
Yes.
Is this the same hardship process as HPP people would do?
No.
And why are we making it different?
I think it's, first of all, it's a different issue. This really is a simplified version of what the HPP, it's more of a simplified version than what the HPP is.
Okay, okay, so, all right, so it's more of a simplified version?
Yes, and it really is intended to track the procedure, the variance reviews, and it builds its own considerations.
Okay.
What's HPP?
Historic Preservation Board.
Thank you, yeah, anytime you don't understand an acronym, yeah.
So my question is, and maybe I missed it in reading this, can an STR owner still continue business during the appeal process? Because I don't think that's documented in here.
No, and it certainly can't be.
Okay, so I think we need to clarify that, right?
Right, so the board would need to indicate how that would happen.
Okay, and then how often can one STR appeal?
Once.
Was that in here somewhere?
No, it's, I mean, it's going to be jurisdiction, it can't, it can't keep approving. Race, gender, title would be a word in a lawsuit, but it would be moved because the board would have already determined the hardship, it would be past the hardship. And it's either going to be a decision of record or it will be appealed by, via an Article 70a procedure.
Okay, so they can't just keep coming back and appealing, like?
No.
No.
The next.
And they can't do the same thing?
The next appeal would be an Article 70a procedure.
Okay, so then we don't need to write that in the set off? Okay.
Can you please identify yourself, and I'm willing to, we shouldn't be this interactive right now because we're going to find a circular.
I can, my.
Okay, if you can, just.
It was just, uh, last time.
Okay, just hang on one second, just so we're here unstuck.
Okay. And then under 155-3 residential, oh, no, actually, 155-4 regulations and controls, it looks like in this particular draft, we still have a six-year, 90-day per calendar year for each dwelling. So is that something that we want to talk about there, or is that something that we need to hold on to because there's still some questions to, you know, how we're going to move forward in that unhoused, owner-occupied, single-family dwelling arena? It looks like Jeff gave us that back, see it right here.
Oh, three, 155-3, okay.
155-4.
Oh, four, sorry. Lily, did you, oh, wait, just a second. Justin, any comments on that?
Right now.
Okay, now for now.
May I ask for a clarification on one issue?
Sure.
In one piece of email that we received that you sent, Justin, could you clarify on your second, third point, hosted, onsite, single-family, allowed by special permit to be reviewed by the Village Board? Is this to say that in all residential districts, that the concept is that as long as it's the owner occupied, that they would have unlimited number of days where, if you're, if it's not, then you have the 15-day as permitted by our code?
As I'm thinking back, there have been a couple of different iterations of this. So I guess I was going back to the initial concept that we didn't really, the board, as we discussed, did not seem to have a problem with renting out a room or house while you're actively occupying the premise. And so that would be something that could continue under this. I think there's a different term than hosted. Jeff, maybe you could, I can look up the master code here as well.
Well, there's a lot of owner occupied, which means that you, it is your legal residence and it's hosted and you are.
Onsite.
So hosted is the correct term then, so I used the term as just to find the last draft code.
Okay. You know, I wanted to sort of give an overview here of sort of where this is going right now, and maybe Steve, you could jump in a little bit too, just to kind of give a more of a framework, because we're talking about details right now, and I think it's more important because you're all here, and I know you're also here for the air conditioning, but I know you're all so interested in really, you know, the workings of this. So Steve, how many, how many short-term rentals do we have identified right now in the village?
14.
We have 14. Of those, do we know how many are owner-occupied?
No, because we have no registry.
Because we don't have a rental registry, which we have, the board has established. So that will be coming into, coming to fruition actually shortly.
For all rentals.
For all rentals, whether they are short-term or long-term in the village. And I think that's a good thing, actually. You know, we just want to make sure people are safe and all of that, and no, we are, that kind of thing, yes.
The question would be under the, under the legislation, hosted is in the residence or say you have a tenant? In the residence.
In the residence.
And on the side, is that a hosted residence?
No, because it's a separate.
That is what the board determined the last time.
All right.
That is what the board determined, you know.
And I think, I think the major issue here with the residents will be in the owners is the time limit for the existing to not exist.
So I want to finish giving the overview, if I may. I was just asking you specifically about how many do we have currently? Yeah, so one of the concerns that came up for discussion with the board was that the fabric of our neighborhoods and the character of our neighborhoods, what if outside investors were going to come in and buy up a whole bunch of houses in this charming village and they all became Airbnbs, or Gerbos, or short-term, you know, what if that happened? So it really wasn't about, in my mind anyway, what was currently existing, it was more, what would the future look like? And I had a very different experience because I, before I moved back, I grew up here, I lived in Fort Lauderdale, and there really was a concern with a lot of blocks being bought up and changing the character of neighborhoods. So that was one piece of it. The other piece of it is, you know, there is a good component of having people who want to come into our village and, you know, learn about our community and the area and spend money. And so, you know, it's always trying to find that balance. So right now, I think the draft of the legislation, and any trustee can jump in on this, is that any current Airbnb, or I can't say short-term rental, I should say, not the brand, in a residential area would be sunsetted over a number of years. Am I correct? Okay, just to make sure that everybody's understanding. Definitely understanding, so. And this is the latest iteration of draft legislation. Any other Airbnbs, the board is looking at having them being allowed in more sort of commercial areas, like the mixed-use Erie Canal, those areas that we were talking about that you can find on the zoning map on our website, where there's sort of less intrusion into a neighborhood, but you still can, we're a small village, so you still can enjoy the entire village. So then, then getting back to the residential areas, do we want to have Airbnbs or enable Airbnb, short-term rentals to be in residential areas where the owner is there? It is not someone who's buying up a property and running it as a business. So now we're looking at that. Is that a fair way to kind of say how we've been framing the discussion going forward with the draft? So that's pretty much where we are right now. And we did have an ad hoc committee that did some great research on just sort of what else was out there in the universe of legislation and what other communities were doing, and it's very much, I would say, a wide range and very much customized to each community and what their needs are. So my personal concern, now I'm on to my opinion, I don't want to create a solution to look for a problem that doesn't exist. So I'm sort of trying to balance that with hopefully the discussion and the input we get here this afternoon. So I'm thinking we can find some kind of middle ground. And I do hear that the sunsetting is a concern for a number of people that I know are here this afternoon that have been successfully operating their short-term rentals with no complaints, no issues that have ever come, and Steve or anybody chime in, correct me if I'm wrong, that have come before you, except I think there was one where there was a mistake where they parked.
Oh.
Okay, in, for some of these short-term rentals for easily over a decade. So I think, again, that's part of the framework of the discussion and not to be dismissed. Meanwhile, we want to make sure that our neighborhoods, the fabric of our neighborhoods are protected as well. So that's kind of the overview with a little bit of my opinion. Is there anybody else who wants, you want to add something else into that?
And I'm sure you all realize it, that this is just not a Village of Pittsburgh thing. This isn't national. I mean, we've been doing research on what people are doing all over the nation, probably all over the world. So this is a concern for communities that don't have any regulation. I mean, if anybody knows that, you know, it's just not good for the community not to have some kind of regulation. So we've, we've got none, and so a lot of people have none. So we're trying to find something that we can set aside for our village for the protection of neighborhoods, to allow, you know, people to come in, so all that stuff with the mayor's side, but we just, we need to have something. We can't go without any kind of regulation.
And I actually thought a really good start was the short-term rental registry and the long-term rental registry.
Right, which is.
Because it just covers, you know, that's the start. And I personally thought that was the starting point.
Yeah, that was great.
But now here we are. Okay, so Lily, is there anything you wanted to add? I just wanted to kind of give an overall framework for sort of where we are right this moment, because I know you all want to have some input too.
No, I think that it was an accurate summation of where we are presently, and that the board was, seemed to be landing on having little to no issues with the, and I can give the initials of the each area, but generally it's the non-residential areas, zoning areas in the village. This would allow us to entertain people from other parts of the country and have, just if it was a hotel in that district, if the hotel is allowed in that district, it seemed a logical conclusion that we would also permit for the short-term rental as well. Where it gets more sensitive is in the areas, residential areas, because our village is so small, and our homes for the most part are historic and in a national historic register, and a lot of areas are very close together, so they don't have off-street parking typically. The lot sizes are smaller, so the impact on neighbors is larger. We have a very small inventory of homes available, so all of that impacts our residents. And I personally am very concerned for the residents in our village. And they have expressed concerns to me personally, and I would like to be on record for, that is my, that is my focus, that I listen to the residents of our community, and I like to respond to their concerns. And that being said, have been weighing the value of having, permitting unhosed, short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, and will go on record at this time saying I am not in favor of unhosed, short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have a hard stop at five. Justin, I want you just to give, you know, some of your thoughts and comments about the overview. And then I would like the board to entertain people who would like to just comment.
So Mayor, can I just ask, because there's some questions that the board has to talk about, I mean, I thought, because I thought.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get right back to the questions, but we have always, in every workshop we've had so far, we have allowed the public to speak.
Oh, absolutely.
And so I want to make sure you're all taking time out of your schedules. I know it's important to all of you that we try to get to as many of you as we possibly can. And so, Justin.
I agree with what's been said so far. The piece of draft legislation that we have in front of us is the result of maybe about a dozen meetings or so, I've lost count at this point, but this has been a work in progress and a collaborative effort to see what the concerns are from the community and try to come up with something that is mutually agreeable by the board. And I think we've made a good amount of progress towards that and looking forward to working out the last remaining pieces.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, Jeff, this is just, yeah, this is just to your information you said. So the non-compliant STRs will have two years to change. So my question is, if they were to go to a hardship appeal, could they wait for two years, and on this 30th day of that last year, then start the appeal process? And then therefore, that's why I asked the question, if they wait until, right, if they wait to the very last day of the two-year, if we use that as a window? And then they go through the appeal process, that, I don't know how long it could take, that could be a whole nother year. So I think that that's a sticky place where we need to kind of figure out how we want to do that. So that's kind of my question to you.
Well, I wouldn't think the appeal process would take a year or less. You're going to have timeframes that built into the, closed, or they could be tightened up to timeframes, but a 30 days instead of six years. It's just like any other appeal, it's going to be heard and decided.
Okay, well, we just need to talk about, you know, how we want to do that, because they answered the question.
Right. I'm wondering if you guys can agree as well.
Okay, another question?
Okay, so this looks like somebody, we talked about the, again, this is hardship, it's all about hardship, but I think it's because it's such a question that we're talking about 12 months versus 24 months. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions to, from the board?
No, I'm anxious to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's important that we do get input because you're all waiting. So I know it's supposed to be three minutes, we really are on a tight timeframe, everybody can kind of condense their thoughts, that would be great. And Alexandria will kind of keep, she'll, I heard, yeah, she'll raise her, raise her hand, and please state your name and address.
Mayor, can I ask, can I ask if they could also, when they speak, if they can also let us know if they are a Airbnb owner and if they're a resident in that Airbnb, that would be helpful for us to know.
Well, I think we'll know with their address too.
Hmm, not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
We do ask in the open meetings for organizations, so.
Yep.
That would apply, yeah.
It would apply, okay. And I think we'll understand that. All right, anybody wishing to give some input? Yes.
Can I approach, please?
Sure.
So I'm with Tim Flynn, who's sitting next to me, but I'd be able to have a minute and a half of his time because I have something prepared.
You cannot, in our policy, you cannot have time ceded from one person to another, so your time is your time.
I'm going to read fast and I'll look for answers.
I'll predict some highlights.
So you can, I mean, but if there's something prepared.
I do, I have, it's about four and a half minutes.
It can go into the record.
It'll go right into the record, you can, you can hand it off to the board.
It'll go to the record.
Excellent, I'd like everyone here, all right. There we go. Hello, my name is Mark Arumah, and I'm the owner of 58 states, three to two family short-term rental here in the village. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Village of Pittsburgh has a rule of pre-existing non-conforming use. We, as owners of short-term rentals, invested faithfully into the village, playing by the rules that the village had put in place. Article 17, non-conforming use of structures grow through ways we potentially could lose this use. There are no properties that are in violation of any of these stipulations. What you are doing is selectively creating rules for one group of investors to penalize them after they invested in the village, creating housing to help serve our community. Typically, when there is change, it is for the benefit of a community. I'm unclear how this will do so since there's not been any issues. In the proposed Chapter 155 residential rental property short-term, you bring up various different points under legislative intent. One is to preserve the character of residential neighborhoods. The property I purchased was severely dilapidated on the inside. According to the neighbor, there was a long-term tenant that lived there who would pass out from being intoxicated on the basis stairs, on a regular basis.
Okay, we're getting close, hands up.
There's no way. I practiced this 15 times, not even remotely close.
Mayor, you said we'll keep it, we have to keep it a little less than three.
A little less than three, just because.
So basically what you're trying to do is not hear my voice, and I have spent 30 or 40 hours constantly working on this, and I would appreciate it.
You're going to, you're going to submit this, the board will.
I want the people to hear, because the board has already made this.
We're arguing and taking up time, we're not here to argue.
It's a public hearing.
It is not a public hearing, and it's.
Significant decisions came, take the property and went from rundown to an absolute gem, attracting the type of people that truthfully we'd rather be nice to. Many of these homes purchased were in rough shape. They now have been transformed to considerably better condition than they initially were. The short-term rentals in the village are in pristine condition, where if you look at a significant amount of long-term rentals, the owners do not do their part or care as much about what we do as ours. Our guests come from homes, guests come to our homes and spend hundreds, sometimes thousands of dollars in the village, whereas most long-term tenants do not go out, eat, and our guests are patronizing local businesses daily. The overall impact to local economy is tremendous. Two, maintaining affordability, both residential ownership, homeownership, and rental.
Okay, calling time, thank you, thank you.
So I have this as well prepared, that I'm going to hand it to everyone, is that okay?
Please give it to the clerk.
Well, I've got one for everyone.
Oh, that's great, thank you. That's even better.
This is on, this is 50 different, yes, where they're from, the why they're staying here, and I think this is going to really exemplify why we have the need for this.
Appreciate you taking the time to do this, thank you.
My four-year-old doesn't think so, because I spent all Father's Day putting this in his mother's butt.
Can I take one too?
Sure, my apologies.
Thank you, no worries.
Do you want to hear two minutes?
I think we're going to try to keep, yeah, yeah, just because there's so many people I know, we want to hear from everybody. Okay, anybody next?
That's helpful.
My name is Erin Eater, I live in 23 Allen Parkway. That's right, I went to Southern High School, Loveless Town. I own personally, the mortgage is in my name, a house on Jackson Park that we have been renting out for a short-term rental for quite some time. Unfortunately, because these meetings weren't really well-publicized, in fact, it was very difficult for us to find it on the website. When we asked Colleen and Tom Bell, our next-door neighbors, who absolutely love us and love our property, to come, they were already engaged. The other thing they mentioned was it was 4:00 on a weekday. That's just really not a great time for a lot of people who work. So I feel like this process has been completely sort of under the covers, and I don't understand why. Because there have been no complaints, as far as I can tell, we've certainly not had any, and if we had, we would absolutely address them. We have put a ton of money into properties here that we keep up. I want to know what the problems were, I want to know the data on the complaints, I want to know the percentage of residents that have complained to you about the fact they don't want STRs there, because honestly, our neighbors on Washington as well have talked, come over and talked to us all the time. One of the issues I know people say is they want to know their neighbors, right, and an STR doesn't allow you. What does a long-term rental allow you to know your neighbors? We have gotten to know Tom and Colleen really well, because we spent a ton of time on our properties. We have gotten to know Joan really well, because we spent a lot of time on our properties. We have spent a lot of money on our properties. We, when this process started, we're on the understanding that we would be grandfathered in, that there would be regulations, which we totally agree with. And we think that there should be reasonable regulations that allow for the existing Airbnbs to remain Airbnbs or short-term rentals. The, there is not a corporation that's coming into the Village of Pittsburgh. Last thing I'm going to say is that we have a million reviews too, we have a ton of really great reviews. This is, I'm just going to read one. Wow, this place is amazing, like an oasis, amazing, tucked into a quiet little street in the village, just a few steps from the canal. I've stayed at a lot of Airbnbs, never have I seen one as dominant as this place. High-end finishes in every room, tons of natural light, I wish my bed at home was as comfortable. Seriously, I didn't want to leave for my meetings, the hosts were prompt and warm, they directed me to cool places to go for food and drinks, I can't recommend this place highly enough. Families, that's who's staying here, and.
Not partners.
No.
Can, can you submit the, some of the, what you said to the board?
Oh, yeah.
To the clerk?
But I'll.
Yeah, that would be nice, thank you, thank you so much.
I'm Keith Marco, I'm co-owner on the Airbnbs we have here. I would like to say that.
Yeah, address, please.
Oh, sorry. Where I live myself, or the properties.
Your address.
I live at 5 Sunset Boulevard. I would just say that I've just been shocked by all this, I just don't understand who doesn't like Airbnbs. I think they're amazing. I get it if you maybe haven't been to one, you don't understand what they are, or who goes to these places, but we are regulated by Airbnb. If we get a bad rating, if, we get a bad rating, no one's going to come stay at our place, our places wouldn't be open, they just wouldn't. I know everybody thinks that they're not regulated, but they kind of are on a client, you know, the customer, customers' rating and so forth. I was going to say, today, it's fine, it's open, consumed with this all day, kind of, just because we feel so passionately about our village, we love it, we love the restaurants, we love the stores. We were walking around shopping today and talking to people, the store owners who have said that they have, you know, they've had the Airbnb guests come into their stores, and they're lovely and whatever, and this happened today as we were talking about it.
One minute?
It's less than a minute. It says, hi, Erin, this is originally, they're trying to book the place today. It says, hi Erin, this is originally, they're trying to book the place today at one-thirty. I'm originally from Pittsburgh, and we're visiting for a high school reunion. Haven't been back in over fifteen years. Wife and kids have never seen where I grew up, so we're going to make it a little vacation. Want to be close to friends, staying in an STR. Their friends are staying in an STR, and also to be walking distance to our favorite watering holes of youth, Thirsties and Pittsburgh. That's all.
Thank you, thanks for your input.
I think we have addressed the undercover allocation statement. And this is exactly how the budget process works.
Yeah, yeah. Hang on one second, point of order is coming back to the board, and we ask that people do not just speak out randomly in the audience. Yeah, everything has been publicly noticed. I know many of you are also signed up for our bulletins. And the time of day was voted on by the board. For the record, I voted against it. I think we should have meetings from either six o'clock on.
Well, there's nothing being said about short-term rental, and we are having an open.
I'm not quite finished with my thought, and then I'll turn it over to you. Workshop and a meeting to me are essentially the same in terms of how it is planned to the public. Anybody from the public can attend, and I feel as elected officials, you want to make sure that you're not disenfranchising people, that you have sort of an optimum time, especially people are, you know, working at like a nine-to-five or just during the day and have other types of schedules. And I feel strongly about that, and I have for, since I've taken office. Yes, Lisa.
So I just want to let everybody know that there is an actual public hearing, an open public forum where you can come back and talk again. And that's going to be at six-thirty, I don't know what the date is, the twenty-fourth, is that right?
Is it six or six-thirty?
No, it is not a public hearing.
It's just another workshop. It's an open forum, it's an open forum. It's actually very similar to this, but it'll be at six-thirty.
Six.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, is a public hearing for the moratorium to be extended.
Okay, and at that time, there'll be information that you guys.
That's a public, yes, that's a public.
Also remember, when we moved our meetings, they were moved to five-thirty and then five, we don't even get done with our business before we even hear anybody till six. No, no, till six, till you guys even care about hearing anything. So there's a lot of back work that happens before the community even hears. And now, we have Zoom, and we have calling. You guys can be anywhere in calling now. We never used to have that, you know, five years ago. So there is ability to access our meetings wherever, whenever you, wherever you are. So I just want to make that clear.
Thanks for your input.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? I heard six-twenty-four, Monday.
I'm going to clarify that right now, because I agree, I think it was a little bit confusing. We have our regular meeting schedule for June twenty-fifth.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, just clarify it, and then talk about the additional workshops, yes.
Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, is a special meeting, not a regular board meeting, to hold a public hearing to extend the current STR moratorium. Monday, six-twenty-four, is another workshop, as such as we're doing right now.
But I've made the point in the last workshop, which was also at four o'clock, that there were a number of people that reached out to me that said that they can't possibly make it. So we, at least the trustees did agree to have it at six.
On the twenty-fourth?
Yes, six o'clock.
Monday, twenty-fourth, Tuesday, seven o'clock.
So the reference was to two separate meetings. One to extend the moratorium for just another couple of months to kind of sort this, and the other is to continue the workshops, but to continue them at a time that probably more people would be able to attend and weigh in. Because it's important, this is a big piece of legislation for our Village.
And we're also open to have more open meetings.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, we can have tons of them, yes.
As many as we need, you know.
People want them, we will have them.
Yep, exactly. Who's next?
Hello. I'm Carrie, the fourth of the forty-one Monroe. I don't own an Airbnb or anything. I've used them quite a lot. In fact, I've used Airbnbs here in Village quite a lot when I came to visit my mother-in-law. I have four kids, and I hate to stay in hotels. So, you know, I always used Airbnbs. So I quite liked that option. From what I understand of this legislation, we're legislating a problem that doesn't exist, but may exist in the future. And that problem is not people like this owning Airbnbs, people who live nearby and come to their properties and know the neighbors, et cetera. It's corporate people, you know, buying out lots of property and ruining the neighborhood. That's the problem that we need to legislate, not this, this is not a problem. So I guess, to me, it seems like this could be done in a stepwise way, where you could set up the registration that you're doing, and then if it starts to seem like there's a problem with corporate people moving in, and somehow millions of people want to come to, you know, Pittsburgh and party, if that starts to be a problem.
Thirsties will be bad, yes.
Maybe a little bit more partying would be a good thing. Okay, if that starts to be a problem, then we can legislate. That would be my suggestion, because how are you going to, you know, this taxpayer money going to go to policing this and making sure that people aren't having Airbnbs? So that's all I'm going to say about that.
Thank you for your input, yeah. I mean, I'm not sure how many people have ever come to Pittsburgh for spring break.
Mayor, can I make a statement? I don't know if you guys have read the legislative intent, because everybody is bringing up the fact that we think that, first of all, Airbnbs are a detriment to the structure of our buildings. No, we are so grateful that there's been amazing work on buildings that have, you know, decayed, that have come back to life from the messes that have been made. That is not a concern. We're also not concerned that there's major parties coming to the Village, and they're screaming at, you know, the top of their lungs, and there's garbage. That is not our concern. If you read the legislative intent, and what we've talked about many times, it is to protect the stock of residential dwellings, to maintain historic character, to be neighborly, to minimize the impacts of traffic, noise, trash, similar impacts, to keep residents affordable. You know that there are probably seven people that I know that have waited years, years, to be able to move into the Village. I know one girl just found a house, it's been twelve years. And we're worried, we're worried about people with families wanting to come into the Village and raise a family. So that is.
Okay, hang on, no, please, point of order, point of order.
So that's just, you know, you've got to understand, it's not that we don't think you're doing a great job of the property, it's not that you bring great people in, it's not that you're not visiting businesses. Residents are sitting back.
What I'd like to do, thank you so much again for your input, what I'd like to do is just to keep the comments going. So anybody else who would like to weigh in at this point, yes, please come up, thank you.
I am Cynthia Cooper, and I own Five Fountain. I agree with everything that was being said. I think we should all be grandfathered in, and I can understand we are moving forward, we have so many now, and we don't want to be old or run this out. Have them register, have them, you know, get permits or whatever, so you can find out, you'll know, because there are corporations competing. Also, I don't quite get the sunsetting thing. What's making me nervous is that you guys are going to, like, sunset me out of my business, okay. My husband died, young guy, I need his income. If I lose this income of my house, I am so screwed. So, that's it.
Thanks for your, I'm so sorry about your loss.
Hi, my name is Brenda, LaRocca, at five West Jefferson Road. I have a family coming in next weekend. They grew up here on Stonegate. It's a young gentleman, his wife and a baby. I don't understand how this is detrimental to the Village. I don't know how this brings in traffic, garbage. Month of August, I have a woman who grew up in the Village, she now lives in Rome with her husband. They're coming in with their infant. How is this bringing in traffic to the community? Garbage? Even if all fourteen of these homes were rented, how much traffic is that really bringing into the Village? So that is a question that I wanted to answer.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, yep, yep, yep. That's the last two.
John Leventhal, sixty-two State Street, and I've been a resident for twenty-two years. And I'd like to remind everybody that the reason that municipalities establish residential zoning districts is for people to live there. By introducing a short-term now, you've now introduced a motel into the residential neighborhood. And it's a business being run in the residential neighborhood. The complaints that I've got, the planning board in this Village allowed the motel two doors away from me to pay over, forcing them to the front yard, so they could expand their parking. Routinely, and I mean routinely, you have cars parked over the sidewalk at the intersection of State Street, Chode Place, and where people cross on the canal path. Happens every week. You've got people parked over the parking lot or over the sidewalk, and people force them around it. It's a residential neighborhood, it's not a commercial neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John. I'd like to have, you know, you said there's a number of complaints that you've received, but the Village has to receive complaints. And as you may recall, in, you know, earlier in this discussion, I asked you, our code enforcement officer, how many complaints you have received.
Can I go up and speak?
Yep, just to respond to that, please.
Yeah, I have received no official complaint. I have received a message from Mr. Leventhal before about a car parked over the sidewalk. One time, I immediately contacted the homeowner, who had the car moved immediately.
Okay, you know, just to, thank you. Because I mean, if there's all these complaints, I want, if there's complaints, please let us know at Village Hall. That's why we're, that's why we're here, but that's why we're here, as opposed to hearing anecdotally about it. You know, we want to make sure we're looking at the hard data of really what's out there. That's all I'm saying, you know, that we need to hear about that, if that in fact is an issue and a concern for budding neighbors. Who else would like to speak, please?
Can I just get an address for Brenda, five West Jefferson? Thank you.
Yes, please come up.
My name is Cynthia Flynn, I'm representing Fifty-Eight State Street, Dunham House. And just to address, it was during the US Open, we found out about the car being in the lot and had it addressed immediately. That's the only complaint we did ever. So I did have some prepared, I just wanted to read a brief excerpt because I know I crunch here.
That's okay, you know, just pick the things that you think are most important, as you would like, you know, everybody hears the kind of.
Also, regarding the reviews that Mark gave you, as you'll see upon reviewing, a great many of our guests were born and raised in Pittsburgh, and have moved across the country and internationally, who have come back to share with their families the Village that had helped raise them. Almost all conversations I've had with transplants immediately turned to shared stories of grade-school teachers, supermarkets, sledding hills, sky bars, and haunted houses that they didn't realize how fondly they were remembered until they were afforded the opportunity to come back. These people love Pittsburgh, they love the people, places, and things that have helped create them and make them who they are. And most of all, they love being able to come back and share those things with the people who mean the most to them, often after all these years. We are not trying to form an alliance of opposition.
One minute, please, one minute.
Yep. We are not trying to form an alliance of opposition, but rather work with you collectively to better assimilate into the community and become a part of the very fabric of Pittsburgh that makes it so great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Is there anything you'd like to submit to the clerk?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, for the record, okay. Would anybody else wish to just, I have a comment here.
Glenn Parker, forty-six, one place. Thank you for the overview of what the big picture was that's been a concern ever since I stood at this podium last January. And asked the trustees, before you start writing detailed legislation, answered one question, why, why are you changing? And stewards of this town and many of the properties that you've heard from so far have been doing an outstanding job. Nobody is even average in terms of being an owner and embracing the responsibilities to make sure you get that four or five stars. There is no other residential dynamic at play here for one-year rentals or permanent housing that has that motivation behind it. And I don't believe I see any signs that that has been taken into account. Also, there has been repeated statements about, do you want to add?
One minute.
Regulations. SDRs are already one-hundred percent regulated, perfectly existing requirements that affect every other type of residential property here. So what's unique about SDRs, so far, the only thing I've heard is that there might be a bunch of corporate investors swooped down and buy and change our complexion. I'll tell you, everybody here that owns an Airbnb or Air, Airbnb or VRBO will be at the front line to fight that battle against that.
Thank you, thanks for your input, appreciate it. Anybody else like to give a comment before we bring it back to the board?
June Kirkland, sixteen Lincoln Avenue.
Excuse me, is that your primary residence?
It is not.
Which is, we need your address.
Oh, sorry, my permanent address?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Five Silver Pines Drive, Pittsburgh, New York, but soon to be sixteen Lincoln Avenue in the Village of Pittsburgh. I mean, after hearing this, I may change my residence to the Village of Pittsburgh. That being said, I would like to ask the board, and maybe the town, the United States was built on small business. All these people here have purchased their homes or purchased their properties to start a small business. I find it hard to believe that jurisdiction can say, you can't, you're out of business, you can't do this anymore. There's got to be something illegal about that. I don't know, I could be wrong. What I'm going to do is hire an attorney to talk about this stuff, because I think there's something we all can do en masse to say, you can't do this. There's twelve of us or fourteen of us that have started a business, and they're telling us we're out of business. In some cases, it's the only business some of these people have. I love business, but some of these people don't have a business. You're putting them out of business. That's absurd. I'm done.
Thank you for your input, appreciate it. Any other comments before we bring it back to the board? And last but not least.
I just wore a wetsuit and I'm going to keep my big mouth shut. Carl Fleishman, forty-one Monroe Avenue, Pittsburgh, New York. And like Mr. Parker, co-authoring the report on the SDRs that the oil commission. I don't see that you carefully digest the local providing chief folks. I see you going, borrowing out the recommendations that you made. I started part of the, I'm angry with an STR and an LTR. The STR is a better name, they're better names. And I guess I'm going to challenge you guys, when we were here in December, when we presented our preliminary findings on the bill, on the evening's presentation, and I was also the department head with Works, wanting to talk about their sanitary facilities. In my understanding from the team, at the intervening seven months, there's been no progress on sanitary facilities for DPW while we're pursuing this legislation as a hot-button issue that clearly doesn't rate for me as the same thing. I want to challenge you on your priorities, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Just for the record, we finally did have an engineer do a digging for utilities at the DPW, which I am grateful for, and I know that the DPW is too. Thank you for bringing that up, it's important, yep, it is important. Okay, last call? All right, we're going to bring it back to the board then. And I thank everybody for your input, you know, regardless of what side or any other, you know, feelings you have, I think it's important, and I think it helps to really expand the discussion. So I'm bringing it back to the board. Any comments on the board? I would just like to clarify two points. Sure. Number one is that what began this entire process is our Village residents who brought to this board a petition, letting us know of their concern. And it is our responsibility to respond to that, to that petition. And to that end, the Village trustees then formed, by the mayor's appointment, created a committee to examine short-term rentals. We got, we received two reports from the committee, and they were taken under advisement, serious advisement, by this board as they moved forward, well, and considered the legislation. I would also like to talk about a word that has caused us a great deal of concern as we try to work our way through this legislation. And that is the term "small business", the fact that it is a business and not a residential use. So that's where we get hung up, because our Village, any municipality, is formed by zones, zoning code, and certain things are permitted in certain zoning codes. I'm sure that you're well aware. And so when we came to the discussion regarding whether this is a residential use.
And so when we came to the, to the discussion regarding whether this is a residential use or whether this is a business use, and is it as a business use for profit, is it then subject to certain taxes that are, would be in addition to residential, but then would be a commercial use and a residential neighborhood? So this is another issue that we have been discussing as a board and in causing us some concern. I think that going forward, we're taking everything into consideration, always, and deliberate for, from, at many levels. And it's not just about us deciding whether it's a business. This is happening on a state level as well. They're trying to determine what these, what these definitions mean. What is a business and what is a residence? And so we're taking all of this into consideration. Most important at all of this, to me personally, is the reduction of housing stock. And as we know, it's, it's, it's at a critical point. And I do have that foremost in my mind as I'm, I'm thinking about legislation. The other thing, I, I, that's all I want to say about it right now.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that. Any other comments? I see that there is a question, I'll get to.
I would like to make a comment. I just want to let you guys know, remember, we are elected officials. We were voted in by residents. So our first and foremost concern is residents. Now, believe me, we love our businesses, we support our businesses in the village, we want our businesses to succeed, but we are, are charged with speaking for residents. And we have just heard residents, you know, the parade was canceled for Memorial Day. Dave and I decided to walk down the street, everybody was out on their porch. We literally walked to each porch and said, would you guys want an SDRs next year? We never got one person that said yes, okay? I'm just saying, I know it's not, it's not a good research, but I'm just saying that people, that residents are telling us that they did not, they do not want SDRs next to them as neighbors. So that is where we're, that's where we started, that's where I started anyways. So that's kind of my perspective.
Okay, well, please, please, you have to be recognized, okay. Justin, did you have any comment? There were just a couple, I saw a little few questions maybe from the audience, but did you have another comment?
No, I, I would like to echo some of the other comments that I've heard. I especially appreciate one of the last remarks from trustee Lamb here, that housing stock is a concern. And that's also one that I see as being significant in the village at this point, given that we're largely built out, with the exception of 75 Monroe, which is in the works. It's always great, though, to come in here and, and see a very engaged group of residents and business owners in the, in the village. What we have so far in terms of the legislation is based on all the input that we've received. And any, any draft that I support in the future will also be heavily supported by the residents and stakeholders we've heard from. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Caroline, I know you, just name an address, just real quick for the record.
So, why have we come on the short-term rentals? Long-term rentals are also a business. Long-term rentals are somebody's business and they're, they're, are you planning to sunset long-term rentals as well? So you can add up, so you can have additional stock? And if you had asked the neighbors, do you want a long-term rental next to you? And they were sitting on the porch, they would say.
Maybe, you might be right, yeah, you might be right, yeah.
And some of them could have been living in a long-term rental because we have almost 30% in our community. And we have an extraordinary, we have.
It's a lot of housing stock.
It is, it's well-earned.
But I don't see it as a concern as much as I see it as it's, it's a stable rental component of our community. And whether you have a deed to your property, you just don't want to mow and fix the faucet and pay somebody to do it, you're all stakeholders. Because you could all live anywhere, you could put your Airbnbs. I mean, I just think, I see everybody as a stakeholder and I don't make that distinction. Even as an elected official, I serve everybody. Yes?
I would just like to say that in, in no meeting that I've attended over the last few years has there been discussion about limiting rent, long-term rentals. And I believe all the board members strongly support long-term rentals as a wonderful part of our community in the village.
Okay, yeah, I think you were asking that in the context of what's the difference? That was my takeaway, I don't mean to put words in your mouth. Okay, thank you. Yes, was it, was it Eric?
Oh, yeah. So, let's see. This email that was part of the agenda says, "Most residents don't listen to their calls, so legislate quickly so this doesn't happen and existing uses phased out." That's in writing on the website. I would love to see, again, I'm going to say it, the data that shows who, where most of the residents are, how they voted, how they're polled, certainly not walking down the street. I mean, that's not a very accurate assessment. So I would love to see that. I also am interested in what the recommendation from the committee was because certainly I was, I volunteered to be part of that to help people understand how Airbnb works so that people could get a really good grip of what it is and, you know, you guys didn't want me on there. It does feel as if we have certain people on the board who have their minds made up and it's not going to matter. Certainly, if you didn't take the recommendations from the committee that you put together, then it wasn't going to matter anyway. And that just feels really not great.
I think, I think that report was posted online, but you know what? I'm thinking we should repost it because we're really all sort of in the middle of this now.
We sent the report from, from the.
Yeah, from the ad hoc committee, yeah, yeah.
And I want to dispute that we did take some recommendations from the report. So when you.
Well, I haven't just like.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, hang on one second here. Yeah, John, yeah.
Just for the record, over a year ago, I walked door to door in two days, about seven hours, and I got 46 signatures on a petition of people who said they were concerned enough about short-term rentals in their neighborhood, that they would support a moratorium by the village. I had 12 other people who agreed with it, but didn't want to put their name and address on a piece of paper. And I submitted that survey to the village.
Yeah, thank you. And that's, that's really what trustee Lamb here was referring to. And, you know, once, you know, obviously, we're responding to that, you know? And here we are. So thank you for bringing that up. Did you have a, have a comment?
Yes, two points. One is I wanted to come back regarding a remark about one-year rental. Our report did say that the starting point should be to treat all rentals the same. And if there are specific reasons that make that an invalid approach for any particular item being envisioned, to make that an exception. Because to say one-year rentals don't apply, but these 30 days or less rentals do apply to these things was not our recommendation to the board. The second thing is that I wanted to say, having people's concern, raw concern, is something that you talk about over a beer. It's not what you write legislature about. If you went up and down the street and asked people if they wanted a wait minutes next door, they'd say no, too, but by golly, they're going to go to it and they're going to love it. They just don't want it there. Unless you get into a deeper conversation about the pros and cons and about the dynamics that are actually going to happen, not speculating chicken noodle syndrome about the sky's going to fall if this moves in or that moves in.
Thank you for that.
I do want to just comment to your, your one-year versus the 30 days or whatever. It's truly, it's a one-year rental versus a weekend. And you have to be realistic, when people come in for short-term rentals, they come usually long weekends. I mean, that's typical, I'm sure people stay a week. But we're talking about somebody who's investing in the community for a year and many times they stay because they want to send their kids to school versus somebody who's coming in for a weekend. And then the next weekend, somebody else comes in. And the next weekend, somebody else comes in. And the next weekend, somebody else comes in. So that is, if you had a young family and you're concerned about, not that the people that are coming in are bad, not that they've had, you know, some kind of record, it's just that the in and out makes families concerned that their children are riding their bike down the street and they got people coming in and out. That's all, it's, it's not saying that they're bad people, I'm just saying you've got more, more, more people.
This is, I thought, I was bringing up.
This is stuff that I've heard.
Point of order, point of order.
Families I come to.
Okay. Point of order here, point of order. Hang on, hang on, point of order. Hang on, hang on, you are not recognized, please. Someone's trying to run this meeting and I'm hoping it's me. Okay, so, so I want, I would like to have trustee Kobe able to finish her comment, please.
It's not my opinion, I'm saying this is what residents were saying to me. I walked the streets when I campaigned twice over. And when I went to doors, this concern came up and I asked them why and that was exactly what they said. They said, I've got kids, I don't want people coming in and out every weekend different. That's all they said. They didn't say that was dirty, they didn't say it wasn't taken care of, they didn't say, that was their concern. It was more of a, you know, a deep intimacy. They just get to know their neighbors, that was it.
Okay, we're at, we're at the five o'clock hour here. Hang on one second, hang on one second. The mayor's speaking, please, for whatever that means. This has really been, I think, great. And we do have a hard stop because we do have an attorney-client session. Again, please let us know when the next workshop is, just so people.
Six o'clock on Monday, the next workshop is at 6:24. 6:24, yes.
Right, okay. So I, I think, I think this has been an important discussion. I appreciate everyone's input, regardless of where they fall out on this. I think we have more work to do. One last thing that I'll just say is, I keep coming back to the fact that we have had successful short-term rentals operating in this village with no complaints. And I, I'm not comfortable with the fact that somehow penalizing them for something that we're thinking about in the future, I see it almost as two separate concerns. That's, that's my takeaway and it even has been, but really some of this input has, has confirmed that as well. Any quick last finals from anybody here? And then we will have to adjourn to go into an attorney session.
Yes, I just have one comment, Mayor, because I appreciate that. But that is not what I'm hearing from you as we've been talking. So that's, that's something from, from, so, I'm just saying. I didn't get that sense. I mean, that's great, you know, change your opinion, but I don't get that sense.
Well, you've always heard from me that I never wanted to have meetings at four? I've never wanted to have meetings at five or five thirty.
But the other thing I have not heard.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear it. All right, any other comments from the board? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Ball call, please.
Trustee Cole?
Hi.
Trustee Leifert?
Hi.
Trustee Lamb here?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion, please.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.